Policy Committee, welcome to members of the public, to our guests and to all the officers who've joined us for the committee. The meeting is open to the public and we're really pleased that you're able to join us today. As always, the meeting is webcast and the recording will be available to watch. If I could just ask everyone to switch their phones to silent, that would be great. There's no fire test planned today, but if there is an emergency evacuation, please follow town hall staff and we'll head over to Tudor Square. To begin, I'll ask every member of the committee to introduce themselves for the benefit of everyone in the room and those who may be watching online, and then I'll ask the officers to do the same. My name is Tom Lent, I'm the Leader of the Council and Chair of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee, and as always, I'll start on my left.
Councillor Andrew Argent, I'm the Chair of Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee.
And Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing.
Zahira Nas, Chair of Finance.
Good afternoon, Abdul Qiyun, Chair of Licensing Committee.
Good afternoon, Councillor Dorn Dale, Chair of Education, Children and Families Committee.
Fran Belbin, Deputy Chair of the Committee.
Ben Miskel, Chair of Transport, Regen and Climate as Policy Committee.
Jonathan, elected Member for the Very Fine Ward of Doran Totley and Chair of Environmental Services and Regulations.
Good afternoon, Councillor Curtis Crossford, I'm local Ward Councillor for another very fine ward of Beaton and I'm the Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee.
Hi, I'm Martin Smith, I'm councillor for Doran Totley as well, thank you.
Mohamed Marouf, Chair of Economic Development, Skills and Culture and Gravesport Ward.
Good afternoon, my name is Darren Hurst, I'm the elected Member for Richmond Ward.
Thank you very much indeed, we all represent great and fine wards, just for the avoidance of doubt. If I could ask the officers to introduce themselves, starting again on the left hand side, please.
Jonathan Clifton, Director of Strategy and Communications, covering for Mike Jackson, Chief Operating Officer.
Hello, Meredith Teasdale, Strategic Director, Children.
Kate Joseph, Chief Executive.
David Hollis, General Counsel.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance, Commercial and Performance Services.
Greg Fell, Director of Public Health and Integrative Commissioning.
Kate Martin, Exec Director, City Futures.
Good afternoon, Ashman Ali, Executive Director of Neighbourhood Services.
Good afternoon, Matt Hampshire, Director of Adult Social Care and Wellbeing.
Thank you very much, everybody, and we will be joined by other officers for different agenda items, so at that point, we'll be introduced to them. We've got everybody here today, no apologies for absence, just for completeness, there's no items that contain any exempt information on our agenda today, therefore, there's no closed session for this committee planned. Declarations of interest is just the next thing on our agenda. Are there any members who wish to declare an interest in any agenda item on today's agenda? Nope, okay, thank you very much indeed. Item number four is minutes of the previous meeting, which is on the 12th of November, just last month. Are members happy to approve those minutes as a correct record of our meeting? Brilliant, thank you very much. Public petitions, questions and statements are the next thing on our agenda. There were two questions relating to the remit of this committee and one question relating to the agenda of today's meeting from members of the public. Responses to the questions relating to the committee's remit have been sent to the questioners and published on the council's website and circulated. No supplementary questions were received, so there's no one here to ask that supplementary question. And then the person who asked the question about the, an item on today's agenda is unable to attend, so they will be provided with a written response in the normal way, and as always, that will be published on the council's website. Item number six, members' questions, none were received for today's meeting. Item number seven is the committee's work programme, which is on page 25 in the report packs, and for that, let me hand over to Craig Rogerson to briefly introduce the work programme.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to draw the committee's attention to a couple of changes to the work programme since December, and there is a further ask of the committee in relation to a cross-cutting issue. So on page 29, members will see that there's one new item, and that's relating to the council motion of 5th of November, standing together against racism. In response, it's recommended that you agree to add to the work programme a programme of events commemorating the 20th anniversary of our declaration of a city of sanctuary. Details of the motion and the recommendation are set out in section two, page 27. The one other change is on the Sheffield Poverty Truth Commission, cost of living item. It's now proposed that that will come early in the new year to allow an S and R briefing in December, and by which time there may also be some more clarity on the resilience fund from government. The extra ask of the committee relates to a cross-cutting issue on sexual health strategy. So, subsequent to the agenda being published, we've been made aware of this item that is in the Adult Health and Social Care Work Programme for decision in January. So as a cross-cutting issue, constitutionally, it falls to S and R, however, the proposal is that we give authority to the Adults Committee to consider that item, Chair, thank you.
Great, thanks you for running through those items. Are members happy to support the proposals that Craig set out there, the additions to the work programme, the change to an agenda item to move it into the new year, and then the permission given to adult health and social care to take the sexual health strategy that Craig's mentioned? Are members happy to support those proposals? Great, thank you very much indeed. Right then, item number eight is the roadmap to a restored and sustainable town hall. This is the first of six items for our decision today, and in order to get through everything in a timely manner, we're going to allocate an amount of time for each item today. For the first item, we've got half an hour to make sure that we cover the presentation, any feedback from members, and then discussion before coming to our decision. And we're joined today by a number of colleagues who've been working for many months on bringing this decision before us today, and I'll perhaps ask our colleagues at the front to introduce themselves before briefly introducing the item, if that's okay.
Okay, hi everyone, I'm Rebecca Nixon and I'm the Town Hall Programme Lead.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Geoffrey, I'm an architect.
And I'm Jessica, I'm an architect and project.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair. Today, we're asking the committee to approve the town hall restoration project moving into the concept design stage. This is where public engagement will take place, and designs will be developed for a project that will secure the future of the town hall for generations to come. Given the town hall's size, complexity, listed status and heritage value, this project will be demanding, and that's reflected in the report and the findings from the briefing stage, including the initial estimated cost ranges and recommendation C, which requests for further funding to complete the next stage. We're also asking committee today to approve progressing feasibility options four and five, which will align with the four visioning principles agreed in January this year. Today, we're really excited to be joined by our architects and heritage experts, Jeff and Jess from FCB Studios, who'll share the consultant team's findings and emerging ideas as per appendix A. We'll then be joined by the brilliant Anna, Maria and Molly, who are architecture students from the University of Sheffield, who ran a town hall live project this year, which was complimentary to the council-led briefing study. They engaged with the public and gathered their stories, as seen in appendix B, which is known as the storybook. Philip Gregory and Sean McLean, the project's executive sponsor and senior responsible officer respectively, will also be available following the presentation to answer members' questions. Before I welcome Jeff and Jess, I just want to briefly remind us all of the four visioning principles that were agreed in January by the committee. So firstly, a town hall for all, that's one that's accessible, inclusive and safe, and although this is a really historic and beautiful building, we know it can feel intimidating and unwelcoming with limited accessibility. This is the civic heart of Sheffield and it should represent and welcome all our diverse communities in the city of sanctuary. Secondly, a sustainable town hall, securing the long-term future. To do this, we've got to make the building work harder, it must be fully used. We know currently 9% of the building's closed and 10% is used for just storage. We also know that building services need a full reset, like the 70-year-old heating system, which is working well beyond its life expectancy, and whilst this is a considerable investment, a full service reset also allows us to maximise occupation and be ambitious with our sustainability goals. Thirdly, a town hall that meets the future civic and public needs of Sheffield. The restored town hall as designed will continue to serve both the public and the council. We know the building feels unwelcoming to the public and isolating for those that work here. The public engagement in the next stage must align to our city goals and our new community strategy, both of which were shaped by the city, and also make a commitment to managing our estate so communities have access to the spaces that they need. And finally, the heritage and history safeguarded for future generations. The town hall is one of only five Grade One listed buildings in Sheffield, that places it in the top 2.5% of buildings nationally. We need to recognise that, we need to restore it and we need to open it up to the people of Sheffield. This supports the wider city's heritage regeneration and also the joined-up Heritage Sheffield Strategy, which we've committed to. Once restored and reimagined, the town hall will be much more than a backdrop, it should be an active, well-used building at the heart of city life. So that's just a reminder of what we set out to do and why we're doing it. I'm now very pleased to welcome our architects and heritage experts, Jeff and Jess, who are going to take us through the team's findings from the last six months, thank you.
Thank you, Becky, and good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for inviting us to support discussion on this agenda item. My name is Geoffrey, I'm a partner and an accredited conservation architect at Field and Clegg Bradley Studios, and this is my colleague Jessica Evans, who's project architect and an associate within our practice. We're acting as architects and design team leaders, and we're here on behalf of the other members of the project team, RLB, Arup and Alan Wood and Partners. Just trying to advance the slide. Thank you. Our team have particular expertise working with many Grade One listed historic buildings. The regeneration of Shrewsbury Flaxmill Maltings and Bath Abbey are just two of our recent projects as a practice, and we've got great familiarity of working in Sheffield. Many of our team live or work in the city, and over the past few years, our practice has been proud to have delivered the Cambridge Street Collective project, including the listed buildings within Leah's Yard. And we feel extremely honoured to be assisting on the town hall project. We've been truly inspired by the stories of its ambitious origins since 1897, as a testament to the pride, ingenuity, achievements and ambitions of Sheffield and its people. And we're keen to find ways to help share these amazing stories in its fabric, including Vulcan, the Roman god of fire overseeing the city, and reminiscent of Sheffield's proud steelmaking heritage. And we look forward to finding ways to share these valuable stories that are associated with this really important Grade One listed building.
I know personally, having lived in Sheffield, how the town hall acts as a civic centrepiece to the life in the city, whether it's celebrating a new marriage or British citizenship, celebrating promotion of your local football team, being a place to protest an important cause, or being a home to many other social or cultural events here. And this project is about recognising the social history of Sheffield Town Hall and enhancing its place as the civic and cultural heart of this city. And as Becky's mentioned, our brief is for a one-time, cost-effective restoration guided by the council's visioning principles, to ensure that we realise a building that is safe to use and accessible for all with greater public access, secures a sustainable, long-term future, that reduces the building's carbon footprint and improves its resilience to changing climates, unlocks better use of space, allowing the council and the building to operate more effectively, and safeguarding its significance by allowing its cultural heritage to be better understood and experienced. In terms of where we are as a project team, we're still very early in this process, so we've been working within the RIBA, stage one, preparation and briefing stage, and this five-month period has been about developing an understanding and detail of the brief that we've received from the council, and readying the project before concept design begins, with a view to beginning concept design in the spring of next year. And we've developed our brief by building on the wealth of past knowledge that's been done by the council, as well as undertaking our own site visits and internal engagement within the council, in order to gain a thorough understanding about the town hall and how it's used currently, in order to identify the project need from which a future scheme could be developed. And this presentation is just a summary of our work, so we've produced a 168-page RIBA stage one report, accompanied by a 229-page appendix, and those documents collate our findings in more detail and table ideas for how a one-time, cost-effective restoration could be delivered. So the next floor sides give a very brief overview of our findings against those four visioning principles, and what's most striking to us is how inaccessible this building is. The vast majority of the town hall's entrances are either closed or have restricted access, and once you do manage to find your way inside, nearly one-third of the rooms are off limits to wheelchair users because of the inadequate provision of lifts and level circulation. We also need to acknowledge the social and cultural barriers to inclusion which are present here, and they manifest through various ways, such as the poor visibility of this council chamber from the public gallery behind us, a room layout that reinforces the hierarchies of power, which often have a white male bias, along with the presence of Victorian imperialist imagery that is unwelcoming and alienating. When we look at operational performance, we've found that 9% of rooms here are closed entirely because of health and safety or maintenance problems, and the vast majority of services' infrastructure that is in place has exceeded the end of life, often by several decades, and this is placing a huge burden on the maintenance team, not just in terms of staff resources, but also in terms of cost outlay. This is a sticking plaster approach that doesn't solve the ongoing path of decline and will eventually result in defunct services. We've found that a lot of the rooms here are lacking in contemporary facilities and are in desperate need of modernisation. The current conditions are limiting how well the building can be used, and this not only impacts how effectively the council can operate here, but it also impacts the community use of the building and the commercial appeal of the town hall's function rooms, which could be providing a greater, more reliable income source. We've also started identifying issues where unsympathetic fabric alterations have been made in the past, as attempts to make the building perform in a certain way which don't suit its historic context, or where defects and repair needs have been neglected because of a historic lack of investment, and these issues all have a negative impact on the town hall's heritage significance and how it is experienced. Our first steps in terms of engagement have been about focusing on understanding perspectives of the project's needs from within the council, across those who currently work, meet or host the public in the building, and it's been fantastic to see members of this committee participating at some of those interactive events that we've had. And six key themes have emerged during that process, during that early engagement, which echo our own findings and will ground the project as we move forward. The need for a more welcoming building, that's easier to navigate, where spaces are used more effectively, better suited to civic needs, and use environmental resources responsibly, all designed with access and inclusion in mind, and in a way that better integrates the town hall in the city as a civic and public amenity.
Thank you, Jess. So the culmination of our work to date has been to try and make sense of the many options that exist, and to assess how these will meet the council's aspirations as set down in our brief. And we've worked with the whole design team to frame a series of potential approaches to offer the council choices on the scope of the possible project ahead, and these range from a do minimum approach as level one, on the left in this diagram, through to creating an exemplary project as level five on the right, and we've shown how the longevity of the investment may range from a few years to much, much longer, depending on the level of specification and investment. We've concluded that levels one to three do not align with the brief provided by the council, as the level of investment involved here lacks future proofing, does not adequately address embedded maintenance issues, and ultimately won't represent value for money in the long term, whereas level four or five approach would be aligned with the ambition for the one-time, cost-effective restoration. Delivering high value through a holistic and long-lasting, sustainable approach whilst retaining the very special historic and cultural significance of the building is key for this project. Particularly significant will be repairs and upgrades to the building envelope, including its roof scape and the many, many windows, better circulation routes and the integration of new low-carbon building services to make the building comfortable, controllable and lower cost to run. And beyond this, there's a key opportunity to reposition the building as open, fully accessible and welcoming. Enabling the town hall to be open to more users, more of the time, will help make it a significantly more valuable asset to the council and to everyone else in the city. And in this way, the town hall can be a more active part of the city's future, rather than just a backdrop to city life. Ensuring we have a diversity of voices shaping the outcomes of this project is really important for its success. A key part of our next steps will be to undertake a coordinated programme of stakeholder and public engagement, and we've already started to shape what that future engagement might look like with oversight from the council's own Stakeholder Engagement Steering Group. So our key aim is to help carefully mend, update and restore this magnificent civic building for Sheffield, to make the most valuable building for the council and for everyone in the city for generations to come, and in so doing, going from this to this. And we've been learning about how other historic town halls and civic spaces have become successful, popular, multi-functional and sustainable civic assets with the right investment, and we're sure that all of these things are possible here too. The next steps of the process at RIBA stage two will continue this process of understanding the problems and finding the best value solutions. This is when concept designs will start to be explored and tested to fully clarify the brief and establish the optimum mix of uses, and to begin to explore how the town hall could look, feel and work in future. Stage two will also include shared and structured public engagement to help inform these decisions and build both consensus and support. So thank you very much for listening to us, and Jess and I are pleased now to hand over to the students, Anna, Maria and Molly.
Good afternoon, we are students from the University of Sheffield and studying our Masters in Architecture. I'm Molly, I'm from Whitby in North Yorkshire, and I'm doing my first year of Masters in Architecture.
Hello, I am Anna, I was born and raised in Sheffield and I'm also in my first year of my Masters.
I am Maria, I'm in my final year of Masters and I am from Cyprus, but I've lived in Sheffield most of my adult life, having moved here for undergraduate studies. We are here on behalf of Live Projects, a pioneering educational initiative by the School of Architecture and Landscape at the University of Sheffield, through which students tackle real-world architecture projects. Since 1999, over 250 projects have been completed, all responding to real budgets and timelines, with students and clients collaborating to produce useful outputs from start to finish. For our project, we have worked with the town hall as our client, independently of the council and architects.
Our project aimed to explore what the town hall could become in terms of a more diverse and welcoming place. Because Sheffield is made up of so many distinctive neighbourhoods, we took a nomadic approach to hear from people widely across the city. We built a portable drawing frame and memory kiosks to help us collect our stories. Then we travelled on buses, trams and through everyday public spaces. By taking the town hall on tour, as it was, we were able to meet with people where they gather, from Grenell to Broome Hall, we were able to listen to these stories that might not otherwise reach the building. This approach helped us to build genuine connections and better understand the communities we hope to bring into the town hall.
Our live project used several methods to gather public views on Sheffield Town Hall, from interactive kiosks and drawing tools to informal chats in community spaces. These approaches helped us reach many people and create genuine, two-way conversations. Participants appreciated seeing their stories reflected in our work, which helped build the trust between the public and our team. A key event we held was opening this very chamber to its people, revealing the voices of Sheffield and engaging the public, as democracy prescribes it as core. By empowering these opened up the vision for the future of the town hall, in the place decisions for its regeneration will be made. Engagement activities revealed that Sheffield Town Hall, the collective memory of the city. Many participants shared personal stories connected to life events that had made the building a backdrop for both personal, communal joy. Others highlighted the town hall's architectural heritage and civic identity, recognising it as a defining emblem of Sheffield's history, craftsmanship and pride.
Our live project is just the beginning of ongoing public participation. Through cycles of testing, prototyping and engagement, we'll listen to people's stories, reflected and refined our approach. This rehearsal of engagement throughout our project inspired new ways to connect with the community, which the town hall team will continue to use. To facilitate this continuation, we provided a reflection and guidance package alongside a storybook, which will support open-ended dialogue and strengthen connections between the town hall and the people of Sheffield over time. Sheffield as a collective has many stories throughout time and aspirations for the future. Looking ahead, community aspirations for Sheffield Town Hall express a clear and hopeful vision for change. The strongest message is one of openness and accessibility. People want the town hall to be physically and symbolically open to everyone. Nearly a third of future-focused comments call for transparent, welcoming spaces that invite everyday use and civic participation. Respondents imagine a shared civic home, a place of learning, care and connection that supports community life and reflects the diversity of Sheffield's people. Cultural activity also features prominently, with calls for music, exhibitions, markets and creative events that bring continuous life to the building. Alongside this optimism runs a sense of responsibility and stewardship, recognising the need to preserve the town hall's heritage while adapting it for contemporary use. The overarching aspiration is for a building that feels alive, inclusive and firmly rooted in the daily life of the city once again. We hope our live project has started the conversation of genuine reclamation of the town hall as the civic heart of this diverse city. Thank you so much.
Do you want to just say anything about the work that's been unveiled now?
Yes, so it was very important for us to visualise all the stories that people shared with us, and that allowed them to kind of come into the town hall within the urban room we created at the ground floor and see the stories they shared with us, so it was a very reciprocal relationship that we tried to achieve with them.
Fantastic, well, thank you so much for the work that you've done and for joining us today. It's really important that we see the work and have an opportunity to celebrate and acknowledge it here today, and I think your words, Maria, about this is just the beginning of public engagement feel very apt at this particular moment, and thank you also to Jeff and to Jess for your presentation and work to get us to this point. So there's now an opportunity for members to ask any questions or provide any feedback. There's a maximum of about 10 minutes for this, so I will ask, if you want to speak, perhaps you can just indicate now, so I know how many members to bring in, and then if people could be brief with their remarks, then we'll get through everybody. Councillor Smith is first, followed by Councillor Bellbin, Councillor Dale, and if people could be brief.
Thanks, Tom. That's a really, really impressive presentation, both in terms of the designs you've come out with at the end and the way in which you've got to that point. So in light of that, please to give the next question. Half a billion pounds is an awful lot of money. Given that we've got to Reba One, what level of contingency, rig or room, whatever you want to call it...
rig or whatever you want to call it, have we got within that half a billion? Thank you.
I think let's just pause there and take that question head on. And I think, understand that the figure you're quoting is part of a range. So just for the benefit of everybody here, let's just sort of make sure that we're clear on that. And I'll perhaps ask everyone to just respond on that particular point.
Thank you. Yeah, so picking up on the question councillor Smith, so yeah, there is a range in the report that varies from about three hundred and forty to four hundred and twenty million. I think as Jeff alluded to within his earlier work, we are at a very early stage. So they are very high level figures with significant contingency allowances that are included at that point. So we believe it's a broad range and as we move forward through our R I B A two, we'll do more detailed work around that. A key part of that will be understanding the building and the fabric of the building. So we've got a range of surveys that are factured in to learn from the building as well. The other strong piece of work we're doing from this is leaning from other organisations. As an example, people may read probably the largest similar project is Manchester Town Hall that's currently ongoing. We've got close dialogue and links with the team at Manchester. We've got their project director coming over to spend a day with us prior to Christmas to understand, we're going to present him where we are, we're going to ask for their learning from where they've been, what the key messages have been as well. So we think that it is a very broad range and it is right and appropriate for the level of work we're currently at. And as time develops, the more work we do, the more surveys we do, the greater certainty we'll get over the actual scope of work and the pricing of it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Belbin, please.
Thank you. Yes, I've been chairing the stakeholder engagement steering group. So it's been a real pleasure to be involved during the development of this piece of work so far and especially with the live project, which I think the creative ways that you've used to engage with people has been a real pleasure to be around. It's really clear, I think, that there's some stuff we absolutely have to do in terms of accessibility and in terms of health and safety that is absolute baseline. Having been involved in quite a few of the events, engagement events around it, I'm quite conscious of how much you've already had to narrow down, if you like, some of the fantastic and creative ideas around about what we want to do with the building. And that's before we've even really got to more engagement with the wider public. And it's really clear from the engagement we've seen so far that we absolutely, this building belongs to the people of Sheffield. That's come across really clearly, I think. Absolutely, it's a building for a major workforce as well as the democratic heart. But we really want, and people that we have spoken to so far, really want to be part of this building and feel it is theirs as well. And that's limited at the moment, I think, from the engagement that we've done. People may have got married here, they may have registered a birth here and some other interactions, but it's still felt to be quite austere compared to somewhere like the Peace Gardens, where people really do feel, have that sense of we can spend a lot of time there. So I suppose my question is around, can this building be all things to all people? There's just a risk, isn't there? There's so much ambition, I think, for what we want to achieve with the building. How much, how far down the road can we get? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dale, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is really creative and I've been to see the students' presentation previously. And in the half term holidays, I was at an event in the town hall where I saw a grandma bring her grandson in at primary school age and they were in reception and they were having a look round. I did take the opportunity to invite them in and show them around the town hall, there were no meetings. And it really did point out to me, and I knew it anyway, but this is a building which we have to maintain and develop for future generations. We have an obligation to do that. It is a fantastic building, it has lots of history. And that little boy, you know, he's gone away and he's been able to, he's been to his town hall. This is his civic building and all citizens of Sheffield. And I think a similar question to councillor Belbin, you know, we can, it is an opportunity here for us to do this in stages so that we can start to open the building up and then develop it further later on for that young boy when he becomes a man. I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Maruif, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm totally welcoming this report because it's been a longstanding issue that has not been addressed and it is now being addressed. Totally in support of what we're trying to do here. Just to give you a little bit of help in supporting the cost factor, and I'm sure you can address it later on. I'm going to just take it from a valuation angle slightly, if I may. Clearly, there's a civic benefit to the property as well. If we didn't have it here, there is a value to that attributed to that. And there's also a value attributed to the fact that if we didn't have this facility, then we'd have to be procuring these offices and workforce workplaces from somewhere else. Has any work been done on that background to support the four hundred and fifty million capital expenditure? I think it's normal for a project to have that sort of work. But this is something positive that I'm trying to bring forward to support this project.
Thank you very much. So I've got four more members have indicated, and I'm drawing a line. If people could keep it brief in their remarks, then we'll come back to the team to respond in the round. I've got councillor Johnson and then councillor Gensia.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's just really encouraging that today we're being asked to rule out the option of short term, doing the minimum and patching up. And just sitting in this room, I think it's worth reflecting on the fact that we're actually using this room for the purpose it was built for a hundred and thirty years ago and it's still functioning pretty well considering. So yeah, I think it's very good to be going on this. But I guess that wouldn't happen if we didn't have all that excitement and your reflection on what people in Sheffield value in the town halls. I mean, big thanks to the master students for the work that's been done to draw that together. So no particular question there, just reflection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Gensia.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentations, both the architects and the student architects. Really impressive stuff. I declare an interest, my father and my brother are both architects, so. I'm just kind of coming from a completely different country where you can't touch heritage. Basically, you can't do anything. I mean, it's really exciting to see how creative you can actually be and keep the kind of integrity of the heritage, but repurpose it for the future, because I think that is the key here. And I agree with councillor Maruif. If we didn't have this building, we would have to go out and find somewhere to host all these things. And at some point, if we do nothing, we would have to do that. And so I'm really excited about the prospect of having a building that is fit for the future and that maybe not be everything to everybody, but be a lot to quite a lot of people.
Thank you. And then councillor Nas, followed by councillor Kayun.
Thank you. Mine is a reflection as well. Thank you for the report. It's very impressive. Thank you to the architects and the student architects here today as well. As finance chair, my priority is to make sure every pound that we spend delivers long term value for the people of Sheffield. Restoring our town hall isn't just about preserving a historic building, it's about investing in a civic asset that belongs to all of us. And our roadmap is clear, isn't it? You know, safeguard the building's heritage so it works for a twenty first century council and ensure restoration is financially sustainable. That means phased work, strong oversight and transparent decisions and a commitment to energy efficiency so that ongoing running costs are lower for decades to come. And by doing so, you know, we are respecting this city's history, but also respecting the taxpayers. So that's my reflection. Thank you.
Thank you. And then councillor Kayun, please.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks again for the wonderful presentation. Really encouraged you to see the progress that's already being made. Sheffield as a city has changed considerably since the inception of the building. Obviously, you know, hugely diverse communities, so demographically it's changed considerably. And it's good to see that you're actually including the diversity of voices in shaping the restoration of the building. However, I'm just wondering, given the diversity and the range of diverse communities in Sheffield, if as well as being accessible and welcoming to all the diverse communities, if the building itself will reflect the diverse communities that we have in Sheffield here. So if anybody walking through the building can actually see that this is a very diverse city. Thank you.
Thank you. Some excellent feedback there and questions. So let me hand back to the team to offer any responses and reflections on those comments.
Sure, thanks. I've been invited to go first, but thank you for the, thank you for the range of questions and perspectives and just listening to them. My range of observations and responses are that firstly, the process we're in is to find the optimum project here for Sheffield in response to the brief. We're at the start of the process and the next stage will be testing design concepts and really understanding whether this optimum mix of cost and value for money can be achieved within the range of spaces and mix of uses in the next stage of the project. And I think it's very important to recognise that this building has been here for over a hundred years and will be here for more than another hundred years. And therefore, we're thinking in a timescale where there will be both conservation and restoration of the building, but also managing its evolution to be more relevant to the range of uses and users in future. And I think in that, there is the opportunity for the changes to benefit everybody from the decarbonisation of the building and how that relates to benefits for everybody, to the very significant socio-economic benefits that can be measured through community pride, learning opportunities relating to a building and adding to its story over the coming generations. And maybe too, the opportunity to work on the project and learn skills or undertake apprenticeships through its change. So I think it's a really important opportunity to benefit everybody. And in terms of intervention and change, yes, this is a grade one listed building, but the process of conservation is about managing change. And in that, we measure benefit outweighing any harm that may be caused. And we're very confident that we can demonstrate very significant public benefit in the way that we propose changes here.
Thanks, Jeff. Now, picking up on councillor Maruif's specific question about sort of the cost benefit and how we manage that, that is something we are starting to think about. And for all the reasons that Jeff mentioned around the socio-economic benefits of the building, the heritage aspect of the building, we will be bringing economic consultants on with us during the next stage. And part of that will depend on how we use the building, the value we drive from the building. But that will absolutely be something that we will be taking forward through the next stage of the development of the project to evidence the value of the money it's spent. And picks up on councillor Nas's point of view about how we demonstrate the value of the money we're spending and the benefit we get for doing that, not just in the physical restoration of the building, but how the building will be used going forward.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to touch on, the building can be a lot to quite a lot of people. I think was a really lovely line. And also the idea that we're not only welcoming our diverse communities and the people of Sheffield, but reflecting them. And actually, I think we're already starting to do that as a council in this building. We saw the Nelson Mandela Celebration Event recently, which is thinking about what that room's always meant and how we represent that. We've also seen recently the current Lord Mayor hosting citizenship ceremonies in the Lord Mayor's Parlor, which is one of the kind of highest heritage significant spaces in this building. So I think we can do that and we can continue to reflect our communities as well as welcome them. And there's loads of opportunity to do that. So I just wanted to touch on that point.
For me, I think also we've got to reflect the fact that going through the planning and the construction phases, a reimagined building will open in another ten years potentially. And we've got to think about what that looks like in terms of the facilities that we create in the building to be fit for that future and then fit for the next fifty or sixty years going forward. And I think there's a huge opportunity here to do something really significant with this building to make it fit for the future from a climate change and carbon perspective, but also from a way that we can engage with the community and bring the community in and also bring our workforce into this building. So there are huge opportunities here for us to unlock through this work.
Thank you all very much. I think what you're hearing from the committee is very strong support for the way forward and for a fully restored and refurbished town hall, which is in no small part tantamount to the, you know, very impressive work that the team have done to bring everybody on this journey with you. So thank you from the committee for the work that's gone on. Look, for nearly a hundred and thirty years, this building's been at the beating heart of Sheffield's civic life. And, you know, the packed council chamber today looks, you know, people who were here for those early meetings in eighteen ninety seven, eighteen ninety eight would recognise, I think, what we are doing here today, this has been at the centrepiece of our democracy ever since it was built. And I think, you know, our heritage is living and breathing. And we've talked before in this chamber about our heritage is everything that we value from our past that we have, we want to look after today to pass on to future generations. And this is what we are doing. We are custodians now of this building for the city of Sheffield and want to be able to pass it on to make sure that it has the future that it deserves to continue to be the beating heart of our city's civic life. And so there's clearly more work to do and this takes us on that roadmap to the next phase. So with that, colleagues, I'm going to ask, are we happy with the recommendations that are set out in the report? That is a really significant moment and then, you know, we'll now go forward to take the next steps on this work with full support from the committee. So thank you very much. Right, item number nine then is as significant, Gleedless Valley regeneration team. Could everyone please come forward who's here for, who's joined us for this item? Thank you so much, everybody, for joining us today. Back in August twenty twenty four, this committee took a decision to to take a new step forward on the regeneration of Gleedless Valley, to look at a new vision for the valley. And today, we are hearing an update on that and taking again some significant next steps. We're joined by a number of people who have been key to making sure that this work has progressed. And before we get into the agenda item, perhaps you would be kind enough to introduce yourselves for the benefit of everyone here and those who are watching. Perhaps Matthew, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alexis. Hello, everyone. I'm Matthew Nimmo. I'm the head of project delivery for estate regeneration here at the council.
My name is Alexis Karachi. I'm the independent chair of the Gleedless Valley Regeneration Board.
Hi, I'm Matt Lawton. I'm chair of Gleedless Valley Tendants and Residents Association and also a member of the regeneration board.
Hi, I'm Lara Joyce. I'm the secretary of Gleedless Valley Tendants and Residents Association and I hold a seat on the regeneration board as well.
Thank you so much for being here. Matthew, perhaps I'll hand back to you and Alexis to begin.
Thank you very much, Chair. Great to be here. So the paper in front of you seeks council approval for a new community-led vision for Gleedless Valley, one that's grounded in the experience of people living and working in the valley and their aspirations for a better future. I've got a few slides I'm going to run through and then I'm going to hand over to my colleagues to talk about their experience. As you said, Chair, in August last year, this committee agreed a new approach to Gleedless Valley regeneration programme. And the real key to that new approach was an acceptance that the council can't meaningfully regenerate a place like Gleedless Valley on its own. We need a collective effort from those who live and work in the valley and we need the expertise, capacity and funding of others, including central and regional government, private developers and investors, housing associations and charities. So over the last fifteen months, we've been working with a Gleedless Valley Regeneration Board, which brings together community leaders in the valley and senior council representatives to develop an exciting and ambitious new plan for the valley. And in addition to working with the board themselves, the board has worked to engage a much wider group of residents and stakeholders through a whole range of engagement methods. Our vision for the valley is the result of all this hard work. And personally, I'd like to say it's been a great pleasure to work with such an inspiring group of community leaders. And I'm really delighted to be joined today by Matt and Lara from the Gleedless Valley Tendants and Residents Association and by the independent chair of the board, Alexis Karachi, all of whom have been absolutely instrumental in pulling the vision together. When built in nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties, Gleedless Valley was a groundbreaking social housing project that attracted visits from town planners and architects from across the country and internationally. The Gleedless Valley Regeneration Board wants to recapture that level of ambition. Indeed, the board's ambition is no less than to develop a new model for regeneration that could work in towns and cities across the north of England. And we're committed to genuinely transferring power to residents so that the community can lead the regeneration programme and take ownership of the transformed Gleedless Valley. With this level of ambition, we believe that we can attract significant government funding and development and delivery partners with the expertise, the resources and the vision to deliver transformational change. Our vision is that in twenty years' time, we want Gleedless Valley to be transformed into a successful suburb of Sheffield. a successful suburb of Sheffield. And that means a place where people choose to live and to bring up their families. I mean, the valley has already got so much going for it. With the right investment, it could really offer everything that you'd want in a neighbourhood. Shops and services on your doorstep, easy access to the city centre, a vibrant community life, all set in incredible landscape with these amazing views over the city. We also want the valley to once again be at the forefront of the growth of the city with improved economic activity and hundreds of sustainable new homes. So what's this mean in practice? In practice, it means three key changes. Firstly, putting the valley's incredible landscape front and centre. So that means making it easier and safer for residents to get out into the ancient woodlands and enjoy the nature on their doorstep. And it means bringing the landscape into the heart of communities with new and improved parks. Secondly, renewing the local shopping centres in the valley, which are rundown and uninviting. New shops and services in a high-quality green environment will create great places to shop, visit and meet. And thirdly, building new homes and improving existing homes. Up to 1,100 high-quality new homes concentrated in and around the local centres could be delivered for local people by housing associations or private developers. And a £30 million programme of investment in existing council homes will lift the whole environment and improve people's living conditions. These three changes translate into 12 big projects, which are outlined in detail in the vision document and summarised on the map on your screen. Between them, they represent a potential £600 million programme of investment, which could be delivered over the next 10 years if the funding can be found. However, realising that level of investment will take time and residents are understandably impatient for change. So we're going to deliver in phases. The funding that we do have will be concentrated on delivering against resident priorities in the short and medium term. In the short term, that means a project to deal with everyday quality of life issues like maintenance, fly tipping and antisocial behaviour. We'll also demonstrate by delivery by making a start on each of the 12 big projects within the next two years. In the medium term, we'll deliver the improvements to existing council homes that residents have been waiting for. The rest, the big projects that are going to transform the valley, will be delivered as soon as funding and delivery partners can be found, which is expected to mean delivery starting in around five years. And alongside the physical changes, there'll be support to give residents the power to take action themselves, both at individual levels, supporting people to get involved in community activities, training or employment, and at a collective level, supporting the development of a strong and stable voluntary and community sector, including a development trust for the valley, that can take ownership of assets, generate income to reinvest in the community and over time, lead more and more of the regeneration programme. Our vision for the valley could deliver a huge amount of real change over the next 10 years. And some of the highlights of the outputs that could be delivered are up on screen. I'd now like to hand over to Matt and Lara from the Gleedless Valley Tenants and Residents Association, who've played a leading role in developing the vision.
Thank you. It's nearly five years since I came to live in Gleedless Valley from a different part of Sheffield. And when we came to look round, I did not want to move there. We got back in the car and I said, I'm not going to live there and I sulked. But it was what we could afford, so we did. And shortly after, I was adopted onto the Tenants and Residents Association by Matthew as our girls are at school together. And what a four years it's been watching this valley develop in front of me and being part of it. Around a year ago is when I became more involved with the regeneration and stepped up into my role as secretary and started being a little bit more vocal and finding my feet a little bit more because of situations that I've got going on at home. This has been a fantastic way of finding myself again within the world. And it has been a real honour watching the several people who are in this room come together with little people like me, talking about what could be done in our area. I often don't feel like a real grown-up, despite what my age says on my birth certificate. I don't feel like a real grown-up and when I'm in places like this, I feel even less like a real grown-up, playing dress-ups, but it's fantastic. So the process of regeneration for the valley has opened up so many opportunities already within its initial stages. It's gaining traction quickly and the changes that we've seen within community organisations that have been brought closer through working together on the board level are really filtering through to becoming real fundamental and, I believe, sustainable changes around the area. We're building new connections, new friendships, and that can only be a good thing for the people that live there. We have got some phenomenally vulnerable people within our postcode. Something like this is needed massively. And what has been incredible is how much of those people we have been able to converse with, get their opinions on, good and bad. There's been lots of different views on things to put this document together. People come into work streams, workshops, conversations, formal and informal, about what they want for where they live. And it's quite basic wants and needs that they have and things that I truly believe are reflected within these pages. I'm hopeful, I'm excited, I'm really proud, I'm enjoying myself and I'm really looking forward to it going to the next stages and starting to deliver at a higher level all the big changes for the people that I share the streets with.
Thank you. I came to Gleedless Valley in 2014, having a diverse family with learning disabilities and so on and so forth, and gave up work to be a full-time carer. And which is, as Lara will quite agree with me, being in the same position is quite, you know, is a really difficult job. But actually, I needed an output to, you know, for me to, you know, I was a governor at one point and still am to a certain degree. But came into probably about five years ago and worked with the masterplan team. All right, in that day, it was not to this same level. And had to leave, you know, only left because of health reasons and then I was asked to come back last year. And what I can say is that this place that I came to from Cheshire has got so much to offer. And, you know, I really, really love the valley. And there was a point where I'd moved off for about 18 months, but that was just down to family reasons and, you know, being closer to other more vulnerable family members. But then came back again and, you know, given the choice, I would stay there, you know, until my dying day, you know. And it's an absolutely amazing place. We've done so much. When I was asked to come back, I was really, really apprehensive and worried about the regeneration because I'm aware it's on the cards, it's been on the cards for many, many years. And there's been a lot of negative feedback from residents over that period because change hasn't happened as was promised in the day. And that, you know, that's behind us now. Now, when, if you'd have asked me this and a reporter was talking to me about this last week and asked a quite, you know, poignant question, what would I have last year? What were my thoughts last year? I was really, really sceptical and didn't feel that this process was going to work. But with all due respect to these guys and to Alexis and to Matthew and your team, that's been such, it's been, when I think about it now, it really, it's really emotional. I feel really emotional about what we've achieved. We've opened up new doors, we've started talking to a lot more organisations within the valley, we're all working together. And that didn't happen before for whatever reason. And it's a really, really, really exciting time and I'm just so proud of what we've all achieved. And, you know, I just hope that that's taken forward, make it into the plans. Thank you.
Very humbled to follow Lara and Matt and the words that you've just shared with you. I rarely feel like an adult either, Lara, so I ring the company. I'll be brief, I'll just make three points. It's been a genuine privilege to chair the board over the last 11 months. I recognise this is a really important moment for this committee to consider this report and this vision document, but something that's really become very apparent is the sense of collective responsibility around the board. Yes, the council is a really important partner in this effort, but it's not just the council. And that's not just my words, that's other words that have been shared with other board members. So I really want to impress upon the sense of collective responsibility that is felt within and around Gleedless Valley. And it's, as I say, it's an honour to experience that in the meetings and outside of the meetings. The second point, second word, resolve, is that regeneration is difficult. It always has and it always will be. And it's particularly difficult in these straits and times. So yes, we recognise this is an important moment to consider this vision in front of this committee, but we also know it's important to keep up the pressure. And so as we move forward with this work, yes, we've achieved a lot, but there's also a lot more to achieve and we'll only do that by maintaining that sense of collective responsibility and keeping up the pressure. The final element, and Matthew has spoken to the vision and obviously that is contained in the report in front of the committee. I just want to highlight one aspect of it, realism. Acknowledging what can be done now, what can be funded now, what can be funded tomorrow and what we will need to do and who we'll need to speak to to bring forward the full plan. That's something that will be consistent in the work as I have the privilege to continue chairing this board, having a very high level of ambition on behalf of the valley, but also being always realistic about what we can do. And as a final comment from me, that's because what I think is almost guaranteed from amazing people like Lara and Matt and other members of the board is making the case for Gleedless day in, day out, 24/7, 365. And if there's one thing that I would want to promise on the record is that as I continue to have the privilege of chairing this board, it will always be banging the drum for Gleedless in the city, in the region, nationwide. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Really, really powerful to hear from you all and it's been a genuine privilege for me to get to know you and to sit around that table with you all. And councillor Johnson and other officers have been part of that. It has felt like very much a shared endeavour. Collective responsibility is exactly right, as Alexis has just said. And it's, I think, for many of us, just shown us what you all know, which is Gleedless is an amazing place with an amazing community. And, you know, as Matthew began his presentation, we want to make sure that this now is a model regeneration programme in the way that it was a model estate when it was first built with serious ambition, nationally recognised if not further afield than that. And I think I was at a conference earlier on today where we were talking about the role of councils in shaping their cities and driving forward economic growth. And there's a clear recognition that the role of a council is to lead through convening. We've got the ability to bring together partners from the community, from across different parts of the city, to be able to put together a plan and then work out how best together we're able to deliver on that plan. Not the council doing to communities, but with shaped by listening to, with input from communities in exactly this way. And we will continue to work in that. Yeah, proud of the work that you've all done over the last 15 months since we took that decision in August 2024. Other people have been involved in that, so let's open it up to other reflections. Councillor Dale was first, so three, councillor Dale, councillor Johnson, councillor Miskell. Take those three and then come over here. Again, if I could just ask people to be brief in their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know about, I will be brief, but I was dying to put my hand up while you were even speaking. I think I've got experience near Gleedless and I've spoken to you before in Manfields and I've spoken to other people that live in the valley who have historically, like you said, Matt, had some scepticism on this. This is absolutely the way to redesign and redevelop communities. You know, sustainable redevelopment cannot just be about buildings and physical infrastructure. It cannot be successful without actually empowering local people and you are the drivers and you will, I am convinced that you will drive this forward. So I think for me, you know, when you have a long-term vision, this sort of sustainable redevelopment doesn't happen overnight and it's really refreshing to hear that this is not done. You know, you've got an idea, you've got a plan and it will come in parts, really. I was just really happy to read this because this is kind of, this is how communities should redevelop or be redesigned with people with lived experience. We need the technical team, we need to be able to do that. But the people with the lived experience will make sure, like yourselves and your neighbours and friends, will make sure that this is really successful and I can't wait to see the journey. I've not really got a question, I'm just gushing because I think this is the way, this is the way that we need to be working in our communities and I think it's just really refreshing and it's fantastic. So well done, everybody.
Thank you very much. Councillor Johnson, please.
Thanks. Obviously, I've been on the regeneration board and as chair of housing, there's a lot of interest in this. I think the unbelievable wave of positivity about this is very testament to what a lot of people in the room have put into this, including not just the four people at desks here, but everyone, all four of you have had a big input there. The regeneration board meetings have been really positive because there's been actual dialogue where people have spent time listening to each other. The project has come a long way since the, many years ago when this was first envisaged and the project really got into the doldrums. It's now out of the doldrums because there is a vision. And just like I said on the last item, you know, like this town hall, the whole of Gleedless Valley is still being used for the purpose it was specifically designed and built for. It's the home to 4,000 families. And looking at timeline, looking ahead to 2032, by 2032, most people in Gleedless Valley will be living in the same houses that they're in at the moment. And that's really important because it isn't just about demolishing and building new things. This is about respecting the area where people live. And it's why there's, it's been really good, there's been more focus on what people are actually talking about and the things that are within our power to do. So, you know, there is resource available for doing housing repairs. The housing committee, we've put a lot of focus on that. There is resource for sweeping the streets, picking up litter and that sort of thing really makes a difference to people when they see the area. And then there's been improvements in place. Obviously, just this last weekend, there was a really fantastic event down at Gaunt Road, which was really buzzing in a way that you would not have imagined, you know, say a couple of years ago. The whole area's been brightened up physically with just some fairly low-cost play markers for that area. There's been activity in the shop units there and that hasn't come about by accident. But if that is the sort of thing that can make a difference in the community, and it is, then this project is standing in some, you know, really good stead there for the future.
Thank you very much. Councillor Miskell, please.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm really struck, I think, by, I think, what Lara and Matt were saying and sharing their experiences moving into Gleedless Valley. And I think I was particularly struck by Lara's experience and she told us, didn't she, that when she first moved into Gleedless Valley, she wasn't happy to live there. And I think that's really sad, isn't it? And it shows the kind of evolution effectively of the area from the grand visions that we as a city and neighbours had for Gleedless Valley, the perhaps decline that we've perhaps seen over some of those years and now this plan. And I think what's really interesting to me is how this plan effectively builds on lots of regeneration work that's happening across the city and embeds that much more stuff like Castle Gate, like Partwood, like Attair Cliff and Stocksbridge, where we have area boards that involve stakeholders. And those stakeholders are the ones who are driving forward that project. And I think this has taken it to that extra level, really. And it's great to see such positivity and enthusiasm and really is quite clear, isn't it, they dispels that cynicism. This way of working helps dispel that cynicism because it brings people with us. I guess as the chair of Transport, Regeneration and Climate, that policy committee in Sheffield City Council, I'm particularly pleased to see some of the transport things that are mentioned within this plan. I think that's particularly projects 11 and 12 that are there. And I've seen some correspondence more recently between the board and South Yorkshire's Mayor's Combined Authority about improvements to bus services in the short term as well. So you can see how the board is really pushing on behalf of residents in Gleedless Valley for better public transport networks. I'd be keen to know your reflections on bus franchising from 2027 onwards and the possibilities there to deliver even more public transport improvements for people in Gleedless Valley. And I guess the final kind of reflection question really is about project 12, really. Project 12, I think, is really interesting about effectively creating more people-friendly streets and routes throughout Gleedless Valley for people to walk, for people to be able to cycle as well. As a city, we'll soon be launching our e-bike rental scheme and it'd be really interesting to make sure that that e-bike rental scheme was something that was built into your plans as well because we want people in Gleedless Valley to be able to have that choice about how they travel.
Thanks very much, Ben. Councillor Otten, please.
Thank you, thank you. So thank you for this.
So, thank you for this, the work you've done on this. I think it's very impressive, the progress that's been made since we previously heard about this in August last year. Now, August last year, I was actually quite critical of the fact that previous master plan had failed, and that, you know, we were where we were then. And I am not that critical today. I'm warm to what you're doing here. I said at the time, however, I mean, I'm quoting myself as reported by the BBC at the previous meeting. People were told in 27 that their home was going to be knocked down, and I can confirm this. A friend of mine is in the same boat, he's been asking me for years when his house is going to be knocked down. He just wants to know, people need to plan their lives. I still can't tell him. How much talking will there be before we start doing? Now, I wouldn't use that term today. I recognise there's a process, you need to have an ambitious plan that will then attract the developers in. And I think this is, you've done that. I recognise the realism in this plan, that this is what we can fund, this is what we're hoping to fund. So, you know, I appreciate that. But I think, I do think the question still stands, and I'm still not very clear. I mean, on page 189, I say, it does say, some homes will need to be demolished. On page 217, it says some homes may need to be demolished. I thought, I'm danger of ultra-nitpicking here, I think the conditions are slightly different, they're not necessarily inconsistent. But in terms of clarity for the residents, you know, can they have some clarity, please, as soon as possible? Are there now homes that are now not going to be knocked down definitively? That we can now say, actually, okay, we might have been planning to knock yours down, but we know, we know we're not. Even if there aren't so many on the other list, you can say, well, we don't know whether or when. Is there some, you know, can we have some clarity, please, for the residents on that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then finally, councillor Crossall.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I'm still recovering from this horrible flu. Firstly, similar to councillor Otten, I want to commend the work that you've all done as part of the committee. I think we've seen far more progress in the previous year than in the previous, however many it was, six years or something. So I think we do need to take that on board. But in reading the presentation that's attached with the report, it did feel like a lot of it was marketing rather than what's actually going to be delivered. Like it talks about 50 warm homes, but councillor Johnson earlier said, I think, there's 4,000 families living in the area. What about the rest? 20 homes with solar by 2027, again, what about the rest? 91% of this isn't funded yet. So what's actually going to happen in the near term is really good and really productive and positive for the area. But it kind of feels like we're misleading people a bit with it as marketing. And like we're kind of doing the same thing that we did when it was first announced. I'd rather be honest with people and say this is a £35 million project that we can commit to today and be proud of, rather than saying it's a £600 million project that might happen if everything goes our way. So I'd just love to be a bit, let's treat people like adults and just be honest with Gledis Valley about when they're going to see investment in their area.
Thank you. Fabulous for me to speak on behalf of everyone here, but I think this report is, has treated, this whole process has treated people with a huge amount of honesty, and has treated everybody in the Valley like grown-ups to be very, very clear about what is achievable, short, medium, and long term. But I'm sure others will have thoughts on that. So I'll hand back to the team.
Thank you. So I think we'll maybe just each respond and hopefully pick up the questions.
I'm gonna say that I'm a little bit offended by the comment that we're not treating people like adults, albeit I made the joke about not feeling like a grown-up. I think that's imposter syndrome from, yeah, I'm a little bit speechless, which isn't often. Please minute that for my family. There's been a heck of a lot of transparency throughout this. There's been so many opportunities for residents to come and give their opinion and voice their thoughts and feelings on the whole thing. That has been one of the most fundamental aspects of preparing this document. If not the fundamental aspect, is doing it with the Valley, not to the Valley. And I just think that when I look through these pages, as I said initially, you can see that all the way through, from when you sat in those workshops with the people and they're sharing what they want. And then it's there, it's these ambitious plans. People want ambitious plans, they're not, they don't want, oh, well, when we've done things like the low-level improvements, the painting and the floor markings, people are saying, we don't just want that. And in fact, we get quite, not a lot of stick, but we do get stick for the fact that that's what's been done so far. Like, oh, I'm regenerating, just gonna paint the floors. And we're trying to instill that painting the floors and doing the murals and these other little things are part of a display of trust that people within the area are worth that investment, they're worth these things. As councillor Johnson said about the market at the weekend at Gaunt, I was there dressed up as a Victorian summer, working with people, and it was the most incredible afternoon. It was chucking it down, and there was nothing but smiles. It was beautiful. We've done a soft launch of this with the community, where we presented it to other groups like ourselves who haven't been on the Board, but to then enable them to filter it through. So we've got like a clear message that everyone is then sharing. And there was some voices of scepticism, because when you've been thinking from 2017 that things are going to happen, and then things haven't as yet happened, there's going to be that kickback, and there has been. But what I've been really proud of being able to do is contact such as yourself, Matthew, and the others within your team and say, this is the questions that were being asked. And there's been an answer for pretty much everything. There's been such a wonderful, open communication between us that if I've not been able to get the answer, I've known who I can go to find that answer from by having this wonderful collective group. About it being a bit of a marketing tool, whilst I can, I can agree a little bit, because the aim of what this is going to be is it's a funding bid. We're going to take it out to people and say, help us do this. This is what we want, this is what we need, and this is what we deserve. Just because you live in S14 doesn't mean that you should settle. That 50%, it's roughly half and half private ownership and council tenants. There's a huge mixture, and we deserve the best. So why should we not be pushing for the best? It's not about treating people like they're idiots or like they're childish. It's saying, look what, I'm gonna cry, look what you're worth. Because if all you're seeing is that you're worth a rundown estate, then why are you going to reach for anything else? If that's what you think you're good enough for, then that's what you're going to settle for. So I'm proud to put my name to this and put it in front of people and say, no, this is what you're worth. Let's take it, let's show these people with the examples of what we've achieved so far. Why would you not want to give that support? Sorry.
And just feeding back from, you know, what Lara was saying there, you're all right. Yeah. Yeah, and I get your scepticism, absolutely get the scepticism. That was us. And actually, that's still a certain percentage of, you know, people that we engage with. And it's real. But the comparison that I can make when I was, you know, around before, before I had to leave for Hill Health, it wasn't a community effort, it wasn't something that was in collaboration. It was just thrown on us. And I might have only gone to about six months' worth of those meetings before I left. I was certainly, came away with that feeling of what are we actually doing here? What, I'm a volunteer, we give up our time for the love of the place that we live. And, you know, the whole, you know, we love it. And I know there's a lot of people that'll say, well, it's, you know, it's not a great place to live. But the people are outstanding. And actually, you know, it's, I'm getting quite emotional myself. But it's, yeah, the difference now is huge. We'll have a question, we'll get an answer back straight away. Back in the day, there might have been a question gone to the master plan team, and we wouldn't get an answer. We'd be kind of be sidelined and weren't consulted. And as I say, it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, the bigger picture, it wasn't. It was just focusing on the, you know, the actual building work and so on and so forth. As for the, you know, the witch houses and whatever, I think in a context, we need to look at that from a structural point of view, to work out that first. And that is work that is going to be kind of, is planned to be going on further down the line in the next few months as structural engineers and whatever. From Douglas's point as well, just a reflection on that. I can't believe how signed up everybody's become over the last 18 months in comparison to what it was like before, and how everybody's working together. And actually, those things that were done at Gaunt Precinct, we're only small. We've had quite a lot of, you know, we've given a lot of investment with, you know, to the groups up there. And actually, it's huge, it's absolutely huge. And people are coming with us, and that's what we do, we're taking people with us. So thank you.
Right, it's quite hard to add anything to that, which is just, you know, lovely to hear. I suppose just a couple of the sort of technical things. Thank you, councillor Miskell, for raising the e-bike scheme. That Connected Valley project does have cycle infrastructure in there, and we definitely welcome an e-bike scheme. If there's anywhere in Chippewa, I mean, there's lots of places in Chippewa that you could do with an e-bike. But the Valley is definitely, definitely one of them. So, yeah, absolutely. And then councillor Otten, I just wanted to pick up on that really important point you raised about what happens to people who were originally told that their homes would be knocked down. And they have been essentially in limbo for several years, and I realise that's really not at all fair. And we, I've just this week signed off with my colleagues here, I've signed off letters that are going to go to all those people who were told that they would be moved out of their homes for them to be demolished or remodelled, essentially setting out the position. And the position broadly is that those homes are no longer expected to be demolished or remodelled. And that will be set out in those letters. In terms of, as you say, the new plan does say that there is likely to be some demolition to deliver the new developments. What we don't want to do is go into the same position again. We don't want to tell people, oh, your homes are going to be demolished, before we've even got a delivery partner or the funding or a planning application. So we're going to take it in stages, we're going to wait till we've got those things in place, and then we're going to talk to people about what the implications are for them.
I'll just add two points. I got the straw to talk about bus franchising. More seriously, it is indeed. At our last board meeting, we talked very, in great detail about transport and how important it is to local people, giving them access to services and jobs. I can say two things. One is, I think we've noticed that with great power comes great responsibility. So the re-acquisition of bus services into, under public ownership is going to require a number of people in this room to make some difficult decisions over the coming years. I can promise you this, you'll be hearing very loudly from Gledis Valley to make sure that local people get the bus services they deserve. And we've already built that into our work plan. And then not to elongate this, but just to acknowledge the point about issues raised in the past and previous master plans. I'd just like to say a few words about promises, is that a lot of what you've read in this committee report, a lot of what you've heard from Lara and Matt, I would argue, wouldn't be possible without the previous master plan. I'm personally quite uncomfortable when we talk about the previous master plan having failed. If anything, we've built upon it, the last master plan focused on housing, and you can now see a far wider and higher level of ambition. And I don't think that would have been possible if we hadn't done things in the past. That doesn't mean that, as the independent chair, I'm oblivious to the fact that people have been waiting a long time. So as a final few remarks, one of the things that's really important to our board is when we promise something, we mean it. When we make a decision, working with partners in the council, we deliver on it. And then just again, to acknowledge the high level of ambition in the plan. I am almost certain it will inevitably change over the years. And when it does change, to be open to why it's changed, so that as local residents are part of this journey, they never feel that they're passengers, they're always in the driving seat with us. So I just wanted to finish on that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Crossall, I will give you a right reply, but I need to be brief.
Thank you. While I wear a suit, I do also make silly mistakes. So I do apologise for the language that I used. I do have family and friends that live in the area, and so it's kind of coming from a bit of first-hand frustration. I spoke to them before this meeting, and they said that they want to know what's concrete and what's an ambition. So I'd rather promise the concrete things than, and if in a few years' time we've delivered on the £600 million, I will dress up like a Victorian person at the next market, and you can throw tomatoes at me as well, why not?
Okay, look, thank you. I think this discussion that we've had for the last half an hour, if you link back to the first agenda item, shows exactly what this town hall chamber is about. It's about communities and the council taking big decisions to make sure that this place, this part of this city, Gledis Valley, has a better, brighter future for many decades to come. And I feel really proud of the way in which we've come to this decision today. And I don't think there's any more that needs to be saying, other than I think in our politics right now, there is a lack of hope. And often, people are proud, but when you have an excess of pride over hope, it tends you towards looking backwards. This for me is forward-facing. This is about hope, this is about looking forward to the future and doing it together. So I'm going to swiftly move us on to the decision to take that next step forward. So we as a committee are recommended to approve the document, Our Vision for the Valley, which is set out as a statement of the council's aspirations for the regeneration of Gledis Valley, working in partnership with the local community and our delivery partners. Is everybody happy to support that recommendation? Brilliant. Thank you all ever so much for the work you've done to get us to this point. And to quote what Alexis said earlier on, lots done, lots more to do. Thank you. Right, item number 10, and we are running out slightly behind schedule, but that was important to let that conversation be had, is the quarter two budget monitoring report for 25/26. And we are joined by Philip Gregory. Philip, if I could ask you to briefly introduce the report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and be brief, I'm not quite sure what to say after those two last items, other than to say they're really...
Draw on the shorts, you're right.
Well, I'll come on to that. They're long-term and ambitious. However, we have to make sure that the council is financially sustainable into the short, medium, and long term in order to be able to deliver on those ambitions. So this quarter two report does focus on the in-year financial position. I'm pleased to be able to report to the committee, as we did to Finance and Performance Committee last month, that the quarter two position is an improvement on quarter one. When we started the monitoring for this year and when we brought the quarter one report to you, we said that we expected to see an improvement as a result of the mitigations that we are putting in place. And this report demonstrates that. We are seeing a 4.6 million improvement in the overspend position. So the quarter two overspend position that we're reporting is £23.6 million. So it's a much better place to be in than we were, but there's still a way to go. As we said earlier, in previous reports, we are targeting an overspend below £20 million for the year. And so hopefully you can see that we're on track to do that. There are key pressures that we are still managing, and those are within adults and children's social care, within home-to-school transport for those with special educational needs, and around homelessness. We are seeing significant progress in there. We're seeing targeted effort going into addressing some of the longstanding issues. And again, that targeted effort is paying dividends. We're seeing that in home-to-school transport, we're seeing that in homelessness, and we're seeing that in some of the social care services as well. So while, again, it's good work so far, there's still more to do. I think I'll stop there and take any questions they might have.
Thank you very much. Philip, any questions for Philip, any comments on the report? Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick, I don't think we've had the settlement from national government yet. When are we likely to get that information?
So we expect to get the settlement a week today, hopefully. That will inform us of funding for the next three years, which again is a big change from what we've had for the last few, where we've had just a single year settlement. So expect to get the financial settlement for the next year, for 26, 27, and then the following two financial years as well. We expect provisional settlements to be in the next week, and the final settlement will be confirmed in January. Just to reference, we expect more detail on the reforms to send and the funding for... the funding for high, for the dedicated schools grant. Again, we'll expect some detail in the provisional settlement next week, and more detail will come, we're told, in January when we get the final settlement. So, again, those announcements that came through from the budget from government last week will start to filter through in terms of the actual position that we can expect in terms of funding for dedicated schools grant.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wants to come in on this? I know it's been shared, we've had this information before, so I think we can note the progress that you've mentioned, note that there's work to do, and we'll await the settlement coming through next week. So, colleagues, then, on page two-five-one, the recommendations are that we note the updated information as set out in the report, and we note the targeted work underway to bring the in-year forecast underspend down, as Philip has mentioned. Are people happy to support those recommendations? Brilliant. Thank you very much indeed, Philip. Item number eleven, moving us on, is the update about future burial provision. An update and some details on the next steps for this important work. This follows the update that this committee received in September, and we said that an update would be provided by the end of the year, and so I'm very grateful for the work that's gone on to allow us to have an update today. And we're joined by Lisa Firth and Ellie Fraser. And Ellie, if I could perhaps ask you to introduce yourself for the benefit of everyone in the room and online, and then briefly introduce the report, please.
Hi, I'm Ellie Fraser, I'm head of bereavement and coroners service in Sheffield, and as, as councillor Hunt says, I'm here today to update you on our work to find new burial space for the people of Sheffield.
And I'm Lisa Firth, I'm the director that has had Ellie's area of bereavement services.
Okay, so, we're here today to update you on our progress since our last report in September. We're looking for your support to continue as outlined in the report, and with a proposal to bring our next update in and around summer twenty-twenty-six, depending on obviously committee dates. I'm very conscious of time, so I'm going to try and not repeat things that I've brought to committee on previous agendas, but I want to talk about the progress that we've made since we came in September. Specifically, we have now completed and received the results from the ecological surveys and the tier-one groundwater surveys, and we have reviewed those results. And we've completed the legal review of the sites and the tenancy arrangements on those sites. So, based on that information, and in alignment with the citywide cemetery plan that we presented to Strategy and Resources Committee in September, this report sets out the current position with regards to finding new cemetery sites for Sheffield. What I should say, because I know this might raise questions, is at the moment, the work is still very much focused on finding land that is feasible to deliver cemeteries. The detail around the design and what will be included in those sites will come in the next stage, as we take those sites forward. What is important to note, however, is that all the sites are proposed to accommodate a range of different burial types, and by that I mean different faith requirements, different burial options, memorial options, et cetera. So, based on the results of our work so far, we now have a number of sites we're looking to progress to the next stage. The first of those sites is up to four hectares of land off Beaver Hill Road. That site is detailed within the local plan process, and the full boundaries of that site can be seen in, in that, in the, in the draft local plan. We are looking for up to four hectares of land within that wider site, the exact location of that is still to be determined. Similarly, we're looking for up to four hectares off Crezik Avenue, commonly referred to as the Wheel, which is also detailed in the draft local plan. Both of those sites were part of the recent inspectors hearings, which have recently concluded. We're now waiting the inspectors' letter, which we're expecting to hear and to receive in the new year. So, there has been no further progress on those sites at this stage. We will now wait to and see what the inspector's findings are, with the view if we're able to then progress to the next level of groundwater surveys, hopefully in the first quarter of next year. We have got up to three hectares of land in the S-11 area near Common Lane, and up to ten hectares of land near Jordanthorpe Parkway in the S-eight area of the city. For both of those sites, we are in current and active communication with the tenants, with a view to securing permissions to go on and carry out tier-two groundwater surveys. I should make you all aware that those surveys take twelve months, so they are quite long and detailed, surveys that need to take place, but we are keen to get on as soon as possible, because we ideally want the results from the winter period, which will give us an early indication of suitability. We are then still looking for an additional site in the S-five, S-nine area of the city. It's a particularly challenging part of the city to find suitable and available land for this type of development. We are aware we've got quite a high Muslim population within that part of the city, where burial needs are, are prominent, and we are in the early stages of feasibility work with a site in that area, but we can't at this stage name it for legal reasons. We do have a fifth site, which we are parking, want to put a word for now, that is in the S-ten area. The feasibility studies are similar to the other areas and show that it could be progressed, but based on our mapping of existing provision, it is not a priority site at the moment, so we are not pursuing that further at this time. And unfortunately, through the work that we've done so far, we have had, now had to discount one of the original sites, and that was in the west S-11 area of the city, that is not, is not going to be viable for a cemetery. I should say, in addition to this, we do have a proactive statement out with current landlord, landowners, landagents, outlining what, what we are looking for, so that if any land does become available that suits our requirements, and is the right price in the right place, we're certainly interested to pursue that and progress that as well. What the report does is outlines the alignment between the sites that we're looking at in connection with the citywide cemetery plan that we presented last time, and there is a map within the report that gives a visual representation of what the distribution of our cemetery provision across the city will look like in the future, if these sites will come forward and are able to deliver as new cemeteries. It's also worth noting that the last report, we talked about the need to develop the remaining space at Stockbridge Cemetery, and to continue some work at City Road Cemetery to increase our Muslim provision there, and those pieces of work are in the early stages of progressing. Haven't got anything to report back, but we are, we are trying to move them forward as quickly as we can. So, the next stage then is to get on to the sites, initially the sites in S-11 and S-eight, to try and carry out tier-two groundwater surveys, and assuming the early indications from that are positive, we will move towards initial design work, which will lead us towards consultation, planning, and ultimately further correspondence with the tenants around moving in towards implementation of those sites as cemeteries. Given the timescales involved, propose, as I say, to come back next summer with an update, because I don't think we're likely to have anything meaningful to present to you before then. I don't know, Lisa's just said, just to make it clear, that all those sites are in council ownership, they are all tenanted, but we are not looking to purchase that land, that is council-owned land.
Brilliant. Thank you very much for the update, for the work that's been done to get us to this point. I think if there's a theme of today's that's in our meeting, it is this council taking big decisions in the long-term interests of the residents of this city, and this is exactly in the same vein as our earlier items. I've got councillor Caillum, councillor Marouf, and councillor Smith, who've indicated, and councillor Argentio. We'll take those four. If people could be brief with their comments and questions, please, that would be helpful. Councillor Caillum?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, Ellie, again, for this progress report. It's obviously great to see sustained progress now over the last, so many reports over the past year or so, that's really, really good. I can tell you also that this progress is reported back to the community quite regularly by the South Yorkshire Muslim Burial Trust, who have a keen interest in this issue and have been sort of liaising with the council for some time. And feedback from the community is quite positive in that, although obviously the feelings expressed by the community a couple of years ago have not been entirely relayed, because everybody knows there's substantial more work to be done, but certainly the community feels more encouraged by the progress that's taken, that's taken place up to date. Just a couple of small nickels in my mind, I just want to clear with you, hopefully you can clarify. Firstly, the identified sites, as you say, are currently tenanted. Now, I understand our review of the tenancy arrangements has, has taken place, and obviously, given that there's, you know, a range of assessments, and tier-one, tier-two, et cetera, and viability assessment, et cetera, it's a lot of work. Are you able to say, you know, say at this stage, that should that work all, you know, be, be positive, that the tenancies themselves could not become an obstacle in, in sort of repurposing these sites? And secondly, and similarly, the two sites listed in the draft, draft local plan, again, you say, we are waiting for the, the findings of the inspector to be, to be published. And again, should those findings be unfavourable to, to, you know, repurposing, what, what sort of course of action do we have available to us? Having said that, I'm sure, you know, things will iron themselves out, but just really looking forward to getting past this viability assessment stage, and hopefully moving on to the concept design, which I think is going to be very exciting for ourselves and the community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Marouf, please.
Thank you, Chair, and what you alluded to a little bit earlier, we're making some landmark decisions, and this is one of them, because seventy-five years, I think, I believe, that nobody's actually looked at burial sites, so it's quite a long time to get to this stage, which is brilliant, really. So, just a couple of observations from this is, yes, the progress is brilliant, and I think the community is quite grateful for that, and, and we are moving in the right direction. But the feedback that I'm getting, and I'm, I'm just being the messenger here, so please forgive me for that, is there is still a little bit of frustration over timescales, that this isn't happening as quickly as it should be happening. So, this is for you just to reflect on. And in terms of City Road, I think that there was a, a release of a further sixty plots there. I don't know whether they've been used or not, so you'll correct me if they have been used recently or not, but I think there's, somebody was telling me yesterday, there's been nearly twenty-five burials in just the last few weeks on, on City Road, so if that's part of the sixty, then we're, we're eating into that fairly quickly. In terms of the sites you've talked about, I'm not going to specifically look at any particular site, and I'm pleased that they're mostly in city council ownership, which means that makes it much easier for us to negotiate with people. But if that all fails, then would you ever consider a compulsory purchase order on sites that are actually suitable, and something that we as an authority could then back with our powers?
Thank you. Nineteen fifty is the last new provision opened by the city council at Stockbridge, so yes, seventy-five years. Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Touching on the same issues that colleagues have already mentioned, I get the, got the sense of urgency, then we've got the obvious link to the local plan coming through, so I completely get that. But the S-five, S-nine specific site, and again, I get legal issues, so we can't talk about where it is, but is the avail, when are we going to get more information on that? Because the local plan stuff, we're not going to know the outcome of the next phase of that, so next summer. Can you give us any indication, or the community, an indication of when some news on that S-five, S-nine can come forward? Because if that is quicker, I think that would offer...
Councillor Argentio, councillor Coston after that, and then we'll come back to Lisa and Ellie.
Mine is mostly just to say thank you for pulling this together, and I know how, you know, it seems like we're really working at pace, and I understand the frustration in terms of people, but the surveys take the time that they take, don't they? And I, I just want to say a special thank you to Ellie for being so patient with the questions, you know, before, in the, in the other briefings, because we have mentioned timescales, and we've added things in, so that is more obvious. So, thank you very much for all the work, and I'm really looking forward to the development. I mean, it's good to look long-term.
Councillor Coston, thank you.
Thank you. So, I just want to confirm really that there's, I think, in my mind anyway, three concurrent strands of work to this. There's the, the two in the local plan, but we have to wait for the inspectors, there's a process there with the whole local plan. Then there are the, and I might have got this wrong, is it the four other sites that we can, and we are doing work such as groundwater assessments and another preparatory, sorry, that word's hard to say, work on those sites, so we can do work there now to get ready and, and get all the evidence that we need for those. And then there is what councillor Marouf alluded to, the work that's going on to find extra space in existing cemeteries. So, there's a lot going on to make sure that, that this happens quickly, and so everybody's got a place, got a place to go when the lost things happen. Yeah, thank you.
So, just to work through those, to confirm that part of the legal feasibility work we were doing was establishing that those tenancies don't become a barrier, so there are still some sensitivities around it, obviously, but there is, we do have the rights to end those tenancies and to reclaim the land to be for use as cemeteries. With the local plan process, obviously affects two of these sites, we're very conscious about the strong opinions that exist around that and about following due process. We talked about whether that became a barrier, if, if the findings from the inspectors was unfavourable. I think it is worth noting that cemeteries are not a compulsory part of a local plan process, none of the other sites exist within the local plan. We can develop cemeteries outside of the local plan, which we are able to do, and would be able to do on these sites. But what's really important here is that we work along that existing process, we work with regards to the inspector's findings, we work with the communities who are engaged there, and the consultation that's happening with them, to make sure that is done appropriately. We also need to look at the wider master planning of those sites, because there are other things, schools and housing, proposed for those sites, so we've got to work out where, within the larger site itself, the right location for the cemetery is, with that and local residents taken into consideration, and of course, the ground feasibility for delivering a cemetery. Timescales are challenging, there's no point in pretending they aren't. We are really up against it to deliver this in time and ensure that we can continue provision. It is achievable, but as you say, the surveys take the time the surveys take. We don't propose waiting the twelve months to start the design work if the early indications are that those sites are going to be feasible, but it will, there are only so far we can get until we get the final results and confirmation with the Environment Agency. Just to be clear, on the City Road, yeah, numbers for Muslim burials are increasing, but we are forecasting them to increase, so there's nothing that we've seen so far that changes our forecast in terms of how long our existing provision will last. We haven't developed further spaces at City Road, so at the moment, anything extra that's been provided is just within the capacity that we, we were already aware that we had. So, actually, I've got a meeting on Monday to look at the landscaping of the space that we've got, to make sure that we can maximise the number of burials that we can deliver there.
We thought, we thought that we could bring forward more space at City Road to achieve approximately six to twelve months additional capacity, and that's the extra work that Ellie's talking about.
Yeah, and that is just starting, that's in its infancy. In terms of, if this all goes wrong and none of these sites come forward, then we have to have all options on the table. As I mentioned, we are proactively still looking for alternative sites for sale in the city, because if the right land comes up in the right place at the right price, we would be foolish to overlook it, given the complexities of the, the sites that we're looking at. If that doesn't happen and we resort on CPO, I, I, yes, I think is the short answer, we would, we would be back here and asking for permission to, to do that, but I'm hoping that we don't get to that, that point. In terms of when we can deliver more information on an S-five, S-nine site, assuming things go to plan, it should be in the first quarter of next year that we'll be able to provide more information, or more information will be available to the public on that, and we will make sure that members are briefed before anything goes out.
Yeah, whilst we said that another report to this committee is probably best in the summer, if anything develops in... summer, if anything develops in the meantime, then we would of course update you, including on that S5, S9 site.
And I think similarly with the City Road development and the extensions there, there are certain stakeholders who are particularly interested in that and we will make sure that they are updated in the meantime as we progress. And just to clarify for councillor Crossthorn, so it's two local plan sites, two alternative sites that we are looking to take forward as quickly as possible, one fifth site that is the site in the S5, S9 area that's not yet named, and then a sixth site that at the moment is being paused because it's not in the area of highest demand, so it's not where we're putting our priorities.
Thank you very much indeed for answering all of those points. So colleagues, page 265, the recommendations are set out. We are recommended to note progress made since September in assessing shortlisting sites for future burial provision, agree the continuation of work to progress the identified sites in line with the citywide cemetery plan, endorse the next steps that are set out in the report and request that a further update report is provided to us in early summer 2026, not least with the caveats that Lisa's just said, that if required, we can have an earlier report. Our members happy to endorse those recommendations. Brilliant. Thank you very much for your work. Okay. Item number 12 is an update about the Homewards Sheffield Programme, which is on page 279, if you're looking at the packs. And for this agenda item, we're joined by Hannah Crosson Smith from Homewards and also James Clark and Laura Custer from the city council. Could I ask you all to briefly introduce yourselves and then introduce the report, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm James Clark, I'm the director of housing at the city council.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Laura Custer, I'm the service manager for commissioning and partnerships in the council.
I'm Hannah Crosson Smith, I'm local delivery for Homewards and Sheffield and I work for the Royal Foundation.
Thank you, Chair. So today we're asking the committee to consider an update on the Homewards Sheffield Programme as we advance into its second year of implementation, which is very exciting. I'm here in my capacity as the senior responsible officer, the SRO for Homewards within the council, and as you've heard, I'm joined by Laura from the council and Hannah from the Royal Foundation. This follows an update that my predecessor, SRO Alexis Chapel, gave to the committee back in September 2024, so just over a year ago. Bit of a recap for members, the Homewards Programme was launched in June 2023 by Prince William and the Royal Foundation of the Prince and Princess of Wales. It aims to be a transformative five-year programme, demonstrating that it's possible to end homelessness, making it rare, brief and unrepeated. And Sheffield is privileged to be one of six locations across the UK that's working closely with the Royal Foundation with our own Homewards Programme. The focus of the programme is and remains in Sheffield on preventing homelessness for families and each of the six areas has those kind of particular areas of focus. The Royal Foundation developed a local action plan for the programme in collaboration with a coalition of organisations and the council's a very active member of that coalition. And I believe the two-year action plan, the year two action plan is due to be published very imminently and we'll hear a bit more about that in a minute from Hannah. And members, the programme is fully aligned with and a core component of the council's own homelessness prevention and rough sleeping strategy, which we recently updated the Housing Policy Committee on in quite a bit of detail. Bit of a recap on year one and then I'll hand over to Hannah. So there's a lot in there, I won't cover all of it, but some of the kind of big successes and tangible outcomes from year one include the upstream programme, which is the implementation of a school-based survey that identifies young people at greater risk of homelessness. And as of recently, that programme had surveyed 927 students, of whom 90 had received follow-up support and there's going to be a full evaluation down the line around the impact that's going to have on prevention outcomes and our services. Funding has been awarded by the Royal Foundation to four projects in Sheffield. They include a project aiming to reduce the amount of time that young people spend in temporary accommodation, removing barriers to employment and a project focused on young people in supported housing. And also we've launched an innovative housing project in partnership with landlords and voluntary sector organisations in the city focused on providing furnished properties and support for families leaving TA. We're also incredibly proud to host the Homewards National Second Year Anniversary Event in Sheffield called Delivering Change Together, which was a brilliant opportunity to showcase the great work happening here and across the country with Homewards. As we move into year two, I want to be honest with members that the causes and drivers of homelessness in Sheffield are as acute and prominent as ever, and against that backdrop, the council is doing a lot of work to strengthen its prevention activities. We've seen significant reductions in B and B usage, particularly amongst families, and we've been recognised nationally for our work on supporting those with long-term patterns of rough sleeping, but those challenges still remain. We know we can't solve all that by ourselves, which is why we're so pleased that we've got Homewards operating in the city and adding value. At that point, shall Hannah just talk through some of the highlights that we expect to see in the year two action plan?
Thank you. So yeah, we've recently finalized and signed off our refreshed version of our action plan, which will be published on our website on next week, hopefully, and has been published as part of the papers for this meeting. It has three main sections and they are focusing on firstly supporting families at risk of homelessness, so homelessness is really about early prevention, so preventing and supporting people at the earliest possible point. So we'll be exploring how data can help to identify families at risk sooner and also designing a homelessness prevention pathway specifically for families, which is focused on that early prevention. And we'll continue to work with landlords on the innovative housing project and the private landlords we're already working with and also to mobilise pathways with some social landlords, so Archers and Places for People. And we, so that's the first section, that's about supporting families. The second section is about strengthening collaborative approaches to support young people and will continue to mobilise upstream, as Jane mentioned, in three schools in Sheffield and also to work with the UK Governance Group for upstream to explore how it might be embedded and scaled across the city and beyond. We are also, will be creating inclusive, sustainable job opportunities for young people at risk of homelessness and also launch new resources for young people in schools and other youth settings to build resilience for young people. The third section of our action plan is about supporting community-based organisations to strengthen and embed homelessness. And we did some mapping in the first version of our action plan and did interviews and workshops with these organisations to see how we can support them to prevent homelessness in communities and that activity will involve supporting them with access to funding and other resources, developing a set of culturally informed principles for the city and also identifying opportunities for greater collaboration for those organisations with the rest of the system, including statutory housing services. We also have some work around changing the narrative around homelessness and we're establishing a forum and also provided some proactive communication tools about reframing the narrative and changing people's perceptions about who experiences homelessness and what homelessness is, as well as some nationally-led events and moments that we'll continue to work on.
Thank you very much.
I think just to finish off then, Chair, finally, the report asks the committee to note some changes in governance arrangements in the city for the Homewards Programme, which I think we're starting to implement from now. And to end where I started, it asks the committee to note that the director of housing role will take on the SRO responsibilities from now.
Brilliant. Thank you very much for setting up the progress that's been made over the last couple of years and will be made as we go forward into that year two action plan. I've seen councillor Dale indicate, can I just see who else, councillor Bellwin? Let's take those two then and then come back to colleagues. councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. Please bear with me because I've had to make some notes. So I am really pleased to read the support and read about the work that's been taking place and the fact that it highlights the important progress that we're making in Sheffield around preventing youth homelessness through this pilot. And the work, I understand, is already changing lives by identifying young people at risk really early and offering personalised support for them and their families. And the fact that this project has been delivered in some of our city schools already, where young people have been identified as needing help and have already received tailored one-to-one support, including weekly sessions, I understand, home visits, family mediation and activities during the summer, and I am reassured with the results that are in the report. They are really encouraging, so 65% of our young people who've been involved in the project feel happier at home, which is really important. Nearly half have reported that they've got improved family relationships and the majority feel more confident, more resilient and better able to function in school. This is exactly the preventative work and compassionate approach that we should be taking in Sheffield and it aligns with our commitment as a city to do prevention work and to be a city where all children and young people feel like they belong in a loving family, that they belong in a quality home and that they can learn and thrive in school. So I do support this initiative and like many of the other presentations that we've had today, it's evident that working together in collaboration with people with lived experience and partners, we can make really meaningful change, which is really important. I do have a couple of questions, so I do look forward to seeing this, if possible, this initiative being rolled out further. So that's one question, is what does it look like moving forward? And I'd like to understand more about the links with Sheffield Children's Services and whether or not we'll be tracking progress of young people who've received support and if we are, how long within their lifespan are we going to be looking at what impact this has had moving forward? Because in short-term initiatives are great, but we sometimes don't see the impacts of that for 10 years or so, so I'd be interested to find out how we're tracking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Bellwin, please.
Thanks. I was also going to draw attention actually to the other theme of this meeting, which has been working in partnership to tackle some of these really entrenched issues. And I really want to draw attention to the work around rough sleeping, I think in particular, that is really incredibly difficult work and I think it's been done by working with people, I think we're using peer mentors, people with lived experience to work with people on the streets. And although those numbers are relatively small compared to, you know, some of the other people experiencing homelessness, they are such entrenched issues and I think the fact that we've been able to take a significant proportion of those people and support them into accommodation is really fantastic and a really great example of how, of the positivity around this work. I also wanted to ask a question about governance and how we are involving those people with lived experience in governance and I think that's been quite a strong theme that's come out through the Poverty Truth Commission, so I'd really like to understand how that is working in the project. And the other thing, which I think I did ask last year actually, we had our report around domestic abuse that came to committee, was it last committee or the one before? And the partnership work we're doing around that. We know that domestic abuse is a major driver of homelessness and it's one area in the report that I don't really see being addressed about the links between what we're doing. I know there must be some links there, but the links to all the partnership work we've got going on around domestic abuse and homelessness and how this project is working on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just kind of echo councillor Dale's comments around the importance of having the preventative approach here. We took a decision in this chamber in the budget meeting earlier this year to recognise that prevention should be a core part of how we build our services. It is better to prevent problems from happening in the first place than deal with the consequences of them once they have happened. It is why it's absolutely right for the work here to be about preventing people from becoming homeless, better for residents and better for our budgets when it comes to supporting people through costly temporary accommodation and other services that are required once people become homeless. So I think this work is absolutely critical and I wonder if you might reflect your responses on those two points from councillor Dale and councillor Bellwin.
So on the question about upstream, yeah, we're really pleased that we've rolled out in three schools in Sheffield and we're working with the UK Governance Group for upstream to explore how we might be able to embed it further so we can update on that as soon as we have, yeah, a further update. On...
Living experience.
Yeah, governance. So in governance, I think it's really important to us to embed lived experience in the Homewards Programme and through the development of the innovative housing project, we included people in workshops and the process and the information we got from that really influenced the outcome. So the Service Navigator, for example, that we had is directly from conversations that we had with people with lived experience of homelessness. We also have a, we had a theory of change right at the beginning of the Sheffield Homeless Programme and people with lived experience were also involved in that. So establishing kind of what we wanted Homewards to look like and what we wanted it to focus on in Sheffield. We have a national co-production partnership and we have two members of the Homewards Sheffield Coalition that sit on that and are a part of that at a national level for Homewards and we're working with partners locally to work out how we can embed lived experience in our, kind of in the local strategic steering group for Sheffield so we can update on that soon.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so really, really great comments and thank you for your questions. I suppose just following on from what Hannah said in terms of lived experience and what the council are doing in terms of their governance arrangements to make that more inclusive. So we have invited members with lived experience of homelessness and rough sleeping onto our Homelessness Prevention Strategic Board. We've actually as well extended training to all members of our board in terms of how to make sure that that's an inclusive and accessible environment and to ensure that we genuinely incorporate governance and decision-making from lived experience. So still work to do, but really good progress there. In terms of domestic abuse, you're absolutely right councillor Bellwin, that is a top three reason for homelessness, it continues to be a challenge in Sheffield. What we are doing in that area really positively is we are undertaking a piece of work known as the Domestic Abuse Housing Accreditation. So that's very much around improving pathways for people experiencing domestic abuse. We are one of the largest local authorities in England to pursue that, so it is quite a big piece of work, but something that's already bringing so many positive benefits such as having our first resident domestic abuse policy as well in Sheffield. This is really positive. In terms of specifically what the programme's doing around domestic abuse, so as part of the innovative housing project, we are actually launching a new pathway with Archers Housing Association. We have decided, we're very early into that, but we have decided to focus that on people that are experiencing homelessness due to the repeated episodes of domestic abuse, so people that keep presenting to us where we're not quite solving that from a housing perspective and a domestic abuse perspective. And they're going to receive specialist transitional support from domestic abuse services such as IDAS, as well as support from the Service Navigator as well around community integration and access to services and things like that. So we're just actually nominating the first family now, this afternoon. So that's what we're doing there.
And finally, just to round this off, I guess on the themes of prevention and partnership that have been flagged by a number of members, I guess one of my reflections would be as a local authority, we have a range of statutory duties that often push us towards focusing our effort on the kind of crisis end of homelessness and that's absolutely right and we have to do that well. What Homewards is bringing to the city is the space and the kind of the coalition of organisations we don't normally work with and the energy and the ideas that's enabling us to think much more creatively about what deep and upstream prevention can work, can mean. Like we're really excited now we head into year two about trying to scale some of those ideas so that when Homewards kind of leaves Sheffield again, which it has to at some point unfortunately, we're left with a really positive legacy in the city of a much more strategic approach to how we prevent partnership, how we prevent homelessness in partnership with organisations across the city.
I wonder, James, if you might pick up on the point from councillor Dale about connections to children's services?
Apologies, yes. So absolutely, children's services are closely involved in the upstream work. I don't know exactly how long we're tracking it over, but I'm assured that it's a very robust evaluation framework. And one of the things I think we've all been impressed with around Homewards and the Royal Foundation's approach to some of these initiatives is the absolute commitment to proper evaluation so that we can build a strong case for kind of funding and roll out in future. But if you'd like the details, we can get the details, councillor Dale.
Brilliant. Thank you very much indeed. So on page 281, other recommendations, that we, this committee acknowledged the objectives, progress to date and upcoming priorities of the Homewards Sheffield Programme, that we continue to support the council's participation in the Homewards Sheffield Programme and partnership with the Royal Foundation, that we recognise the establishment of governance arrangements, which we've talked about, and that we note that the director of housing services, James, has assumed the role of senior responsible officer overseeing delivery on behalf of the council. I'd be happy to support those recommendations. Brilliant. Thank you all for joining us today, thank you for your work. Okay, item number 13 on our agenda is the, an update, a decision about the installation of the Street Tree campaign plaque on the town hall. This is on page 339 in the packs, if people have got that. And we're joined... And we're joined for this item by Richard Eyre and Dan Whittaker. Richard, Dan, thanks very much for being here. Only for the benefit of everyone in the room, you could just briefly introduce yourselves and then introduce the report, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Richard Eyre and the Director of Streets and Regulations.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Dan Whittaker, Projects Officer, Streets and Regulations.
Chair, I'm going to ask Dan to give you an update on the report. Firstly, I'd just like to just highlight the learning, using the learning from the Street Tree Inquiry and the principles of the Street Tree Partnership embedded, officers have rightly ensured maximum efforts to consult and listen to the community throughout this process. Rightly, we've been led by the group, many of which are in the room today, and nominated co-chairs. With our values front and centre, officers' role has been to facilitate, enable and rightly let the group lead the direction and shape the recommendations we're bringing you today. Even though this has meant delays in the original aspiration to complete the plaque, it has meant we have built trust, fostered transparency and strengthened our relationship. A large number of face-to-face sessions have been undertaken to get to this point, including a comprehensive pitch turn session on the committee report you see today in front of you, with volunteers giving many hours of their time over the past year or so, and all genuinely deserve a huge thank you from the city. As with any open process, there have been disagreements within the group, but throughout the co-chairs have enabled the group to have candid and robust conversations and still move forward with one united voice. Thank you, Chair.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, I'm pleased to ask elected members to endorse the design, wording and installation of the Street Tree Campaign Plaque at Sheffield Town Hall, a project that stands as testament to community activism, environmental stewardship and the council's commitment to learning from the past. In May 2023, Sheffield City Council made the commitment to commission a plaque recognising the Street Tree Campaign and acknowledging the wrongs committed by the council. This campaign saw courageous individuals and groups stand up to protect thousands of street trees from wrongful felling. To ensure authenticity and inclusivity, a task and finish group was formed, compromising of campaigners with representation from Stag and Saw, academics and council officers. Their remit included the developing of the wording, design, selecting an artist and overseeing the manufacturing of the plaque. The group's collaborative spirit was evident throughout with decisions made democratically, with abstination from the council officers and independent chairs to maintain independence. The wording of the plaque was developed by the group through discussions, consultations within their networks, including online polls, professional analysis provided by a former campaigner. So the final inscription reads, "In recognition of the courageous campaigners who saved thousands of street trees from wrongful felling by Sheffield City Council and as a reminder to all that such failures of leadership must never happen again." The date's 202012 to 2018. The design, created by a local artist, Lydia Monks, herself a campaigner, incorporates both text, imagery reflecting the campaign's values and the city's heritage. The plaque is being manufactured by Brass Founders, a Sheffield-based company renowned for their work. They've been responsible for pieces across the city, such as the Sheffield Legend Plaques. Given Town Hall's Grade One listed status, careful planning and consultation have ensured that the installation respects the building's architectural and historical significance, with guidance from planning officers confirming no listed building consent is required if recommendations are followed. The installation of the Street Tree Plaque is more than a commemorative gesture, it is a lasting symbol of Sheffield's values, the power of community action and the importance of learning from all. It celebrates those who fought for our environmental heritage and serves as a reminder that the council must always be accountable to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your work over the last couple of years, along with members of the community and campaigners. I know some of them have joined us here today. But I think before we open it up, I'd just like to say that I think this, this moment, and it is a significant moment, recognises the enormous contribution of campaigners, residents and community partners in protecting Sheffield's street trees. The actions that the council has taken to demonstrate our commitment to continue to listen and to work with communities reflect the changes that have taken place in the council since the dark days of the Street Tree dispute. And on behalf of the committee, I would like to say thank you to everyone who's been involved in the Independent Task and Finish Group for this work. We will continue to collaborate with communities and continue to listen to the voices of residents. Let me open it up to see if there's any further reflections or any questions for Dan and Richard from anyone? Councillor Johnson and then councillor Bellwin. Oh, yeah. Councillor Johnson, councillor Bellwin, councillor Ossie.
Thanks. So I was just going to say that, yeah, I agree, this is significant. And the point, the importance of this plaque is so that people don't forget because of course, the trees dispute was such a long-running event in itself and it's now many years behind us. So people with long memories, you know, are not going to forget this ever. But the younger generation already, you know, are not so familiar with the Street Trees dispute. It was one reason why it was important to set up the inquiry in 2021, that eventually became known as the LowCOP report. And I think it's probably worth saying that it's always worth rereading that from time to time, just to remind how easy it is for things to go wrong. I'm often now saying that the council is working really well in a way that, you know, I did not always say, but it's quite easy for that to slip away if we take it for granted and remember that, as in with any group relationship, you have to work quite hard on it to make it work. So I think it is really good to get this up here. Looking forward to seeing this in place. Just tell us, when are we expected to see the actual manufacture and installation?
In terms of when we receive formal endorsement, Brass Founders believe manufacture would take no longer than eight weeks. So it's our hope to have installation unveiling before the anniversary of the LowCOP report, which is the 6th of March.
Councillor Bellwin?
Thank you. Yes, I will remember the meeting at which we made the decision to take forward this decision around the plaque at the emergency meeting, which I think was shortly before councillor Hunt and I were elected into our present positions because I spoke on behalf of the Labour Group that day. And one of the things I remember talking about was saying how we, however much pain and distrust and hurt there was at that time, it was so important that we continue a dialogue with the campaigners and that we, we keep talking. And I think as councillor Johnson has rightly said, it is about not forgetting anything that has gone past and the copy of the LowCOP report sits on my desk at all times and has done ever since I was elected into that position. And this is a really useful reminder of it. But I'm also really pleased that that dialogue has continued to take place and will, I am not saying that all bridges are mended, I am sure there is still some distrust amongst various people who were amongst the campaigners there and that is an ongoing process that we must never lose sight of. And this plaque feels like an important part of reminding us that we need to continue that dialogue at all times and always be listening to our residents and not leaping to conclusions about what we think is best for the city, but making sure that we are always talking to our residents and doing that in partnership. Thank you.
Also, thank you. Councillor Ossie, please.
Thank you. Thank you. I very much welcome this. It's been across the desk at Wasteland Streets in a couple of times over the last couple of years and finally, I think finally we've got to the right place, haven't we? It's, to me, it puts the, it puts the, there's an important lesson to be learned, isn't there, through Trees Dispute? It's a part of our history now and it's one of these lessons from history that we have to remember and having a plaque there will help us all remember it. I think it goes, to me, it sits alongside events like the digging up of the Anglicans now almost 50 years ago, the General Cemetery. Now that, there isn't a plaque, but it's embedded in the landscape, isn't it? That kind of wrongdoing by the council. But it shows that we can, we can, that when history is built into our environment, that we, it helps us remember it and it helps us to learn not to do these things again. In that context, I was struck by a comment in the earlier discussion on the Town Hall about the presence of Victorian imperial imagery in this building. I've got to say, I must be not paying attention, I hadn't noticed it myself. There's a statue of Victoria itself, obviously, which is, I think is perfectly fine. If there is Victorian imperial stuff going on, maybe that needs a plaque too, so we can contextualise that and learn all the lessons we need to about the crimes of empire. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dan, Richard, whether there's any final reflection from you?
No, nothing, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think it just leaves me to say thank you very much on behalf of this committee for the work you've done and for the work of everyone who's been involved in getting us to this point. The recommendations are set out on page 341, which note that the EGM that councillor Bellwin mentions, the council passed a motion requesting the council install a plaque in the entrance of the Town Hall. We note the action by the task and finish group to agree the wording to be used on the plaque and to endorse this wording. Note the action taken by the group to commission the design and to endorse the design recommended. Note the action taken to commission and manufacture of the plaque and approve the recommended manufacturer. And that we note that as this building, as we've heard already today, is Grade One listed, the installation and the location of the plaque will be subject to obtaining any necessary planning consents. Are people happy to support those recommendations moving forward? Brilliant. Thank you all very much. Dan, Richard, thanks. That concludes... I think it is fitting. Thank you. I appreciate that. That concludes our business for today. I think we've taken some really significant decisions today that genuinely people will, you know, look back in future decades and generations and think decisions that we took today will have shaped the cities, the lives of residents going forward for many years. So thank you.